I'd like to call this meeting of the city council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Let's have a brief moment of silent prayer, please. Amen. Clerk, would you please call a roll?
Roll, here. Mr. Pete, Tatum.
Here.
Affleck, Ishmael, Thompson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
You gonna cut that Tim out?
No, doesn't matter.
Go on, Stow.
Okay. Next item is approval of tonight's agenda.
I motion we approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion of Mr. Smith, second of Mr. Thompson, approval of the evening's agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, agenda is approved. Any public comments on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move into the agenda, which has to do with the financials of 2223, which is actually looking at the budget for 2023, which you have in front of you.
Mayor, is it possible to have anybody in the audience that wants a copy of this to get a copy of this?
Well, we'll have to run some copies.
Does anybody in the audience want to see what we're looking at?
Yes, sir.
One.
Raise your hand and ask the clerk to four, three?
Over here.
I have. If you want to tell the clerk, I have Eddie on the call.
Here's a copy here, let's see if he shows up.
Penny?
Yeah.
I have Eddie Ishmael.
Okay.
Is on the call.
Here, let me get the paper quick. If Eddie shows up, we'll have to...
He's on the call.
There you go.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a best question right now?
Hmm?
You asking questions right now?
It's open for discussion.
Sorry, I was not at the budget meeting. First question I've got, I noticed our budget for last year for fuel only went up about $3,000. What did we figure that as per gallons, considering we have this, or is there going to be reserve left over? Because we've been having the fuel prices bouncing all over the place. I mean, one minute it's $5 a gallon.
I'm thinking it was calculated at 350 a gallon.
350.
You're asking about, you know, reserve out of that?
Well, my question is, you know, if it happens to go over, the way the economy is going, it could be $5 a gallon next month. Is there going to be enough money in there, or are we going to be able to pull it from somewhere to cover that?
Well, you probably have to appropriate it.
Okay. That's all right.
My second question is for the police department, fire department. Did y'all get what you needed to keep the city going well this year? Is there anything that we didn't include in there?
Last, or maybe today, I think it was last year, we had so much adjustment, it's kind of hard to date yet.
Chief, you'll need to come up and speak in the microphone.
So much adjustment, it's kind of hard to...
Sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. If we don't have a police and we don't have a fire department, we don't have a city.
As far as operating, I haven't had any issues. Most of my operational funds though comes from Act 83. It wasn't necessarily affecting, most of my administrative costs, my salaries and all that coming out of the city budget, so I really haven't had any issues this year as far as, I've kind of got everything staggered around, I haven't had everything in place.
So you're happy with what the budget puts in there for the fire department this year?
Yeah, yeah. What I've got on there, I'm good with.
Okay.
Is everything that you submitted to the treasurer reflected on this budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the police chief?
Chief Lane, come up to the podium, please.
I'm sorry, what was the question, sir? I was looking at my paperwork.
My question for you was, did you, in this budget, are you happy with what the police department's getting for funding this year? Is there something we're missing before the year starts?
No, I'm, yes, I'm happy with other than a vehicle, but I mean, I didn't account for that in here because right now, we're needing coverage for personnel, much worse than we're needing a vehicle right now.
Wouldn't use ARPAs funds later to take care of that, but I just want to make sure that you were squared away from the year, there's nothing you didn't get that you needed to keep this county, this city going.
Yes, correct.
And again, same question for you, chief. Your budget that you submitted to the treasurer is reflected in these numbers tonight.
That's actually what I was looking at when we was talking. So far, what I've looked at, yes, they are.
Thank you.
Chief, I've got a quick question.
Yeah.
On central dispatching, it went up from 28,000 to 33,500, when it stayed prior the year before at the 28,000. Do you know why that increased like it did?
I do not. That's a predetermined amount, that's just what, they said that, I don't know what they based that on.
Well, I haven't heard the court of courts say anything about raising that. They did pass their budget the other day. So it'll be interesting to find out who's setting that, maybe it's the new county sheriff or something, I don't know.
I believe it's the judge, but I can...
The judge does it?
I believe it's the county judge. That's who we pay those fees to.
Correct. I'll have to look into that, that's interesting. Thank you, chief.
We need to double check on that tomorrow.
Alan?
How about P and Z?
Well, hold on, can we, because I think we're still under chief. Sorry. For animal control, I had a question on hosting fees. Back in 2021, we were at 7,000, and then we went down to 2,400, and now that we're only at 600. Is there a particular reason for that negative increase? Are we not charging?
We have cut back some on the hosting fees for the spay leader clinics, but that's something that I'm trying to build back up and have more.
And then, my same basic question for the reclaimed debt fees. It's normally 1,100 a year, we only put 5. So I didn't know if there was certain reason for that increase as well.
Uh...
I'm just saying about the same answer and trying to build those back up?
That's what we're trying to do, I'm trying to build everything back up.
Gotcha. I mean, let me look real quick, I may have only one. I think that was it for me. I think there was an increase also on uniform expense.
Think they're getting another officer to help that one up?
Yeah, because it was 2710, and then it went to 4,000, and then this year, coming in, 5,000. Is that for the possibility of a new police officer?
You're calling the police department, yes.
Yes, uniform.
Well, and that's inflation. The price of these shirts used to be $85, you can't get them for less than $100 by the time you patch them and tailor them now.
Okay. What is the difference between the uniform allowance and uniform expense?
The uniform allowance is what the officers have yearly to spend on, like their uniforms and shirts and stuff. The expense is more based on equipment, yes.
Gotcha. All right, that was my question, thank you.
You're up.
About plain P and Z?
I'm assuming we have representatives from the street department?
Yep.
Joey?
Sorry, this is my first year of budget.
That's the street super...
I looked over the numbers, and they're in line last year. I do have one question. Building the grounds, I saw that those two line items were moved, repair maintenance for computers and repair and maintenance for B and G equipment. I would think that would be the vehicle. But I saw that was removed from next year's budget. I just wanted to know.
Do we have an answer to that?
No. That's been taken off?
Yeah, they're both removed.
I think you better check with the treasurer tomorrow and see.
Yes, sir.
What was the amount of those items?
Came out at about $1,000.
Okay.
Well, I mean, but you got names.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to do that.
Yes, sir. We're done.
You have more questions for me while I'm up there?
No, just want to make sure you had what you need.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Street department?
Just a second, we need to go back to the floor. We're going through this for quick. I've got questions wanting to speak to her.
I just want to make sure that you have everything in mind for this year. There's any questions about your budget, any concerns about your budget?
I, what I've got, it looks good, a lot of the term in and stuff, and what I've here, the same as what I've got.
Maintenance.
But, you know, it's like everything else last year, you know, the last or this year, we made adjustments.
Right. And we haven't reconciled our budget for this year yet either. Have we? Passed the year, we haven't reconciled it yet.
What do you mean, we haven't reconciled?
We haven't. It has not been put in front of us as a reconciled budget yet. The figures have not been all altered to what it currently is supposed to be. We did not go through anything like any other city does, even first-class cities, and reconcile their budget several times during the year to make sure the paperwork is what it actually is.
Oh, and just a moment, Mr. Martin. First of all, you know, this council, which you were sitting on a year ago, had the budget presented after, which we've done eight years in a row, this is the eighth consecutive year that I've sat on the budget committee, and that budget was reconciled with department heads, it was reconciled through special meetings, and it was presented to and voted on and approved by every member of this council.
When?
December of last year, December meeting.
December meeting, we approved the budget for this year.
Correct.
And did we at any time during this year reconcile it to what actually has been done and spent on the budget?
Every single council meeting, on the website, available to you for every, for your purview, prior to every single council meeting, for the 11 council meetings that have occurred year-to-date, there are financial statements. Those financial statements contain the detailed line-by-line item budgets, and those figures are there at every council meeting. You have the opportunity to review in advance.
Not much...
On the website, like every council member, and you have the opportunity to review during the council meeting and subsequent to the council meeting. Yet, you reserve your comment of reconciliation to this evening, when those numbers are reconciled for every council meeting prior to, during, and after said meeting.
Now, that's an interesting way to put it. I've never heard it's put that way, because all you ever say is, we're going to approve this for audit. And if we go back and look at our history, we've had problems with the audit, and it has to do with budget, every single time.
This council, this city has never failed a state audit in the last eight years.
Then what was that last review with the slap on the hands of the mayor about what happened at the audit? We didn't even bring that up and vote on that like we're supposed to do.
No, but it'll have to be brought up before the year's end.
Now, it doesn't have to be brought up, everybody else does. Why are we so special? Why don't we let the city go?
We usually do that, but sometimes we do that at the end of the year in terms of amending the budget when it's done. That's when it's done.
And here's the problem, we just had an election, where the election shows that they are not happy with what has been going on, because, sorry, Mr. Smith, but the person that you supported did not get in, so your regime doesn't continue. We have a new mayor here, the new mayor here...
Mr. Martin, what's that?
I am still on the subject.
You're out of order, out of order. The topic, the topic is, the topic is...
I am for.
The topic is the budget, it's not...
And I'm talking about the budget.
No, you're talking, you're...
Yes, I am.
You're getting into personalities and other things.
It's got to do with the budget.
It has nothing to do with the budget.
How can we don't have our, our, here you've got me all flustered now. How can we don't have the documentation we're supposed to have? We don't see the check registries. That is never produced to us, it was produced to us once and that was taken away because we cannot see names out there, because that's too personal. It's not too personal for the state to do it, it's not too personal for the county to do it, it's not too personal for any other city to do it, but it happens to be something that our city does.
Hi, Senator.
And we have not legislated on why it can or why it can't be done.
Mr. Mayor, if...
Just a second, let me clarify something, because we spoke to Penny before this meeting. She didn't say we weren't going to get check registries because people's names are on them. She said that's why it stopped, they got clarification of what they could and could not get. Now that she's got that clarification, we will start getting them again. What you cannot put out for public is on the payroll, like she said, you say person 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
Okay.
With the amounts individual, or they can redact the name.
Here's the law, show me that here.
Hold on, just a second. What I'm doing is giving clarification, that those studs are going to start coming back to us. So, but just leaving the question wide, wide open, like we don't have an answer of why, that's not really fair. She did explain, and we are going to start getting them, so I just want to make sure that that's out there.
But they haven't done it for the eight years that he has been mayor, up until now. Every other city does that, and that's finances. That's, how can you say you know what's going on with the numbers unless you could see where this stuff has been spent? We, the city council, at last meeting, you could see how many people were confused about this ARPA money. People were upset, because they were told one thing and another thing happens. The mayor says one thing, and then all of a sudden it changes to something else. And the whole council, the whole council, not just the three people that do the budget, the whole council has not been informed. And you have a, and this administration has done that consistently. Now, all I want to see is the things we're supposed to see consistently happen. This argument about personnel, that can be tabled to something else, but there's nothing keeping the rest of the stuff given to us, because you can put numbers on a piece of paper and it means squat unless you can verify why those numbers are there. And this council does not sit down and do it, it's your little clique that you've been doing that for I don't know how many years. And who's on this committee? Could you please give me the names of everybody on this committee? This is part of finance, so I'd like to know, who made this, who made this decision to put this budget out? We have the mayor, we have Mr. Thompson, we have Mr. Smith, who else do we have?
Yeah, former councilman Les Covington.
Les Covington.
You have every department head. So, and, and those budget meetings are open to the public. You choose not to attend.
And last time I went to one, the mayor says I couldn't record it. I wonder why? So anyways, on that subject, why is this being kept from the public? Why are we not transparent? What is so, I'm not saying...
Our financials, Mr. Martin, you know, at the, on the, on the pretense that we don't want to turn this into a five-hour dissertation from you...
You're doing a good job of it by yourself.
I am just trying to bring you back to the subject at hand, and the subject at hand is that we have a budget committee that's been approved, eight years running, we present, we present...
Who approved you?
We present, do you want to talk, or you want me to talk? Which one?
I'm confused, because you're saying all sorts of things you have no proof of. Prove it, show me this stuff. I've asked for this stuff before, I've asked for the...
You have not asked for the people on the budget committee.
Yes.
You've been told, you've been told ad nauseam how many times that people have been told.
Last time I asked, the mayor said, "See me in my office." So it's see him in his office, which I am so confused about. Why can't this be said in public?
You know, Peter, you want to grandstand in front of your camera? Go right ahead.
I don't need to grandstand.
Well, you're doing it, go right ahead.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Can we move on to something else, please?
Mr. Tatum?
We move on to something else, please?
Sure, sure. I am just frustrated.
Amen. Any other comments, questions?
I have a question for Chief Vance. If, on the repair and maintenance of buildings, there was a jump from, it started at 2,600, then the next year, 4,000, and now 9,000. Can you kind of just explain a little bit why the jump and what all that entails?
The $5,000 jump is because Mr. Trump was here. If I pay the lawyer for that truck to be, doesn't he have the location from the open door, the door, I mentioned, it's a nine-foot length door, I'd like to go ahead and upgrade that. I got quotes, but go ahead and do that if you have all I did.
Thank you, go answer that.
So, in the budget, we are giving a raise to every employee in this budget that's presented, correct?
Correct.
Of some sort. It's either 2% or 3%, correct?
No, in, in terms of the, specifically the police and fire departments, those departments have been habitually below, historically below other departments. We have current payrolls for some of the fire department between $11 and $12 an hour. We're seeking to rectify that, because we continue to lose police and fire employees to neighboring cities that are smaller, because they have higher comparable, they have higher salaries. And so, we just lost a police officer two weeks after his state tenure, required tenure for the police academy. And part of that is because we've had historically lower-paid fire and police than we have street and road and administrative personnel. So we've sought to close that gap, so they are on a higher percentage. But, that being said, we might be taking a fireman from 11 and a quarter an hour to $13 an hour, which, if you want to sit there and pull a hose into a burning building, building at that rate, go right ahead. But, you know, so we are correcting, to a certain extent, to the amount that we can prudently do so within primarily street and police, I mean, fire, excuse me, I misspoke, fire and police, which again, some of your questions, such as this one, would be answered if you were willing to participate in this open meetings. Whether you got a camera on a tripod or not, you could still be there and be up to speed with that type of information. But, to answer your question, those are a higher percentage than the 3% to the street and the 3% to administration. Does that answer your question, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Clearer is the bill. Now, the last question I have, we're talking about salaries, is, I believe we passed an ordinance 202205. Are you familiar with 202205? There you go, there's 202205. In that ordinance, we set the mayor's and the clerk's salary to $16,000. Is there a reason the clerk's salary hasn't been changed to $16,000?
Because the ordinance that you just put in front of me says a newly elected, which the current treasurer is not newly elected.
Yes, they are, because they've never been elected before. And that's all how the council wants to do it. We can set a precedence and say, yes, since they've never been elected before, that's a newly elected person.
Did you say the treasurer?
No, the clerk.
If you'll go back and remember, Peter, when we had that discussion that night, you did say and point out that it would not affect her.
And it might not, but that's still up to the council to decide, and that's what I'm putting to the council.
No, you put that in a previous meeting to the council, and, and you agreed that the city clerk would not be affected. If you want to go back to the minutes or your own video, then do so, but you agreed at that meeting...
At that meeting, that's what was said.
That it would not be, that the clerk would not be affected.
Yeah.
And we move forward based on that.
And that's what was said, and now I'm bringing it up, saying that, well, it depends on how you look at it, because if you go talk to a lawyer, it's, could be received a couple different ways. And I am asking the city council, since it's a part-time position, she's putting in all this time, she's trying to straighten out stuff, why wouldn't we give her the benefit of being a newly elected person, having the $1,000 more a year, which I might not go a long way, but if we're worried about everybody else, why aren't we also worried about the elected official? Because, you know, that's a place that you can get somebody resigned from also. So if we're gonna, and we don't take care of ourselves, but I'm not asking us to. That is a job that nobody really understands what that job is. I don't know how many of you ever sat down and talked with clerks from other cities? How many of you deal with clerks from anyplace else other than Cherokee? That is a thankless job, just like the mayor's job is, and I didn't see the need to start somebody out at a brand-new position at a high salary, since they're both, well, she's got a lot more learning time in than the other mayoral candidate, but it would be nice that we as a council might consider it and might do that. Now, it's up to the clerk to decide whether she wants it done or not, too, and if she says she doesn't want the money, then let's not even pursue this any further. But, it's something that the council can decide and do something. And that's why I thought I'd bring it in front of us and ask us. Because it's not going in my pocket, so, you know. We're worried about everybody and making them appreciate it, and the same thing with the road and streets folks. I hear everybody start talking no offense fire department or police department, but that's another kind of this job. And it would be interesting to know budget-wise, of how much time is actually spent on roads and streets, and how much time is actually spent on other projects that don't have anything to do with roads and streets. And as a person that's supposed to be looking at the finances, it might be interesting to see work orders and stuff, and where the money's coming from and where it's going to, because with presenting a bunch of numbers to a bunch of folks that aren't sitting in and discussing it, and all the elderly and talking to the professionals there, and finding out what they want, it's three people making a decision, and you're hoping everybody else nods yes. And we got a new mayor here, how much has he been into it? Because this is going to be his budget for his year.
Okay, see, can you, can you take a timeout for a second, so I can address any of your...
Sure, sir.
Your dissertation?
I will be quiet.
Because your dissertation's into 15 minutes.
I'm sorry.
So, you know, at some point, you have to take a breath, Mr. Martin, and the people respond.
I'm doing it right now, I'll do it right now.
Okay, so, number one, it's not three people making a decision. You have four department heads over there. They go through the minutia of the detail of their departments, from hourly wages to software to equipment, that great detail. And they have done so successfully the eight years that I've been on the budget committee. They do a great deal of work prior to bringing anything to the budget committee. So your claim that three people are involved with it is just false.
I said making the decision, I didn't say involved.
I didn't say making the decision, okay. But again, the decision is, it's a joint effort, it's not three people making a decision... It's not three people making a decision. It's a constant, if you would ever take the time to attend a meeting, it's a constant interaction of the budget committee members, two of which sit on city council, and the mayor, a former city councilman, and we have a volunteer who happens to be an expert in Excel spreadsheets.
And I heard that.
Just a moment, let me respond. You've been on your soapbox long enough. So let me respond. So we also have a volunteer who is an expert in Excel spreadsheets, who also sits with members with the city clerk and treasurer and interacts to try and understand how to pull all of this information together. So it is a joint effort. There's not a, any one person or any three people making decisions. It is a constant assimilation of data. That data gets constantly updated for every single council meeting. We have screens on either side. We parse our way through that. It's available on the city website. You can go back to January, you can go back to March, you can go back to any timeframe, and it's there. If you choose to study for it, based on some of the comments that you've made this evening and other council meetings, you don't study the numbers. Period. I don't believe you put any reasonable amount of time in review. Otherwise, I believe you would have a different opinion about what's before you tonight. And you would have a better comprehension of the hours of work that goes on, not only members of the budget committee, but your department heads, their, their individual employees, and the volunteers that help out the budget committee. But you come in here and you start lecturing and start comparing about what this city does versus the other cities. Maybe if you took some time out from your video, uh, efforts of every public meeting within this county, and you focused on your job here tonight a little bit more, you might have a better understanding of the numbers. Unfortunately, you choose to do otherwise. Now, do you have something specific to the budget that we're trying to go forward in a reasonable, professional way to show you this is where we are in this process? We believe the numbers as presented by our department heads are complete enough to move forward that we can approve a budget for next year. We do reconcile back. Mr. Kylo, in prior years, as head of the street and road department, we sat there and have accounted for moving $500 out of, out of a materials budget to $500 to maintenance. And that's just one example, but I can go back and cite you a lot more. But you make baseless, wild accusations that are not founded in fact, they're founded in opinion. You drag a municipal league book into the, into the room, all of which we have copies of.
You did, where'd you get the copies from?
But you're not, but you're not an attorney, number one. You're, you have spent no time on the municipal league, so don't lecture me on the law because you don't have a degree.
Mr. Mayor, can we move forward, please?
Please.
Yes.
I've got a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
Do we have anything that shows, this is probably don't, but we have anything that shows what the new salaries are going to be starting pay for the fire department, the police department, everybody after the raise? Do we know what it's going to be?
I can tell you what might be.
What?
It'll be, well, up to 13 for my standard firemen and up to 15, up to 13 on my standard firemen, up to 15 on my officers. I've got two brand-new firemen, when they complete all the training, I'm going to give them a raise to about all of it until they've got all the training completed.
Right.
I've got one officer the same way, he needs some more training certification. And then I'll give him this final one.
Okay.
At that point.
You know what yours is?
It won't start off right that.
That's a fair, I mean, it's $2 an hour more, I mean, it's.
My base rate is going to go to 1550, which is going to cover most of my officers at this current time. I have one or two that will be a little above that, but.
What's your part-time pay going to be?
$15 an hour.
Wow. That's reasonable.
It's going to be a wage right now.
Uh, one other question I had on the police department's item number 6178. Is that $750 computer maintenance going to cover, uh, I know you have a server that's kind of getting full and stuff like that, is it, is it going to cover all that?
I'm sorry.
Item number 6178 on your computer maintenance, is that $750 going to cover any upgrades to like your servers and stuff for the year?
No, I'm going to work those in the grants.
Okay. That's just some kind of low to me. You can't even buy one computer anymore, decent one for $750. And unless, I'm talking servers and hard drives. I don't think that's all of that.
I've got a question about our attorney. So our city attorney is retiring, correct?
He's, uh, probably leaving at the end of January, maybe.
Have we taken any steps to look into the new attorney and how that negotiation on pay would be?
I have, I've talked with our city attorney and asked for some recommendations and, uh, I thought perhaps it'd be best for the newly-elected mayor and the council to make that decision because you're going to have ample time after January 1 to do that.
We skipped old business. I don't understand that part.
There wasn't any old business.
Yeah. ARPA money.
Well, that's part of the financial thing, so if you want to bring that up.
Okay. So the resolution, sorry, the resolution for the bonus for the city employees, what did we decide to do with that? I know I, I didn't, I got the dates wrong and wasn't able to attend the budget meeting. I really wish I would have. Um, did we ever come to a conclusion of what, what's going to happen there?
We had voted to, I had put a motion forward to table the consideration of the bonus until this meeting.
Right.
And, you know, council voted unanimously to do so.
Right.
Um, you know, that's up to the mayor if you want to consider any other issues relative to the budget and we can, you know.
Well, it's part of the, what do you want to do with the, on the budget before we move into that other? Do you want to have that to be voted upon at our regular meeting?
I need to, if we're going to give the.
I would do it tonight.
If we're going to do the ARPA, it is got to be done before Christmas. It needs to get done tonight.
So you're recommending a vote this evening, Mr. Rowan?
I would, I would recommend an open discussion, uh, with the races that are coming through. If, um, council didn't see fit to stick to their original amount of bonus, I think it's worth at least a discussion of at least a smaller bonus. And I do feel like we should discuss that and get it done tonight. One way or the other.
You're talking about the bonus, not the budget?
Yeah, both.
Both?
Yeah.
Okay.
So because the bonus is coming out of ARPA funds?
Right.
It's really a separate discussion from the budget?
That's what I'm citing.
Right. So at this point, what do you want to pursue, the budget or the?
Well, the budget, we've been discussing the budget. We need to either take some type of action on the budget. It's up to the council.
I'll say we accept it.
I motion we delay this until the council meeting and hopefully more members will be sitting here to vote.
Well, I have Mr., I have Mr. Ishmael on my phone.
As it sits, do you have enough votes to pass it?
I have Mr. Ishmael on my phone, so that would mean we have five, six members, so we have more than a quorum.
Yes, I'm here.
And he, he just acknowledged that he's here. So we have six members of council here. My recommendation is that we go ahead and approve submitting this budget to the council meeting for a full vote of the council at the regular council meeting.
I second that motion if that was a motion.
Yes.
Okay. It's seconded.
Motion of Mr. Thompson, second of Mr. Martin to place approval of this budget at the council meeting on, excuse me, December the 15th.
Yes, sir.
Roll call vote since it's funny?
I guess we better. Roll call vote, please.
Tatum?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that'll be under old business. Okay, ARPA bonus.
I guess we need people who've talked about it at the budget meeting to kick that off.
And, and I can tell you that from my opinion, having worked my way through the budget, you know, I have, I guess, two opinions. You know, because of the effort that we're making towards increasing salaries, um, part of me wants to reserve those dollars for other funding needs of equipment and possibly supplementing, you know, salaries next year. But I recognize also that it's been an item of discussion before council and I might be agreeable at a lesser amount. I believe we've made a significant effort in this budget process with department heads to provide increases, but I recognize as well the desire to, uh, provide some form of a bonus, you know, to employees.
I do want to say something real quick. I, I do thank the budget committee and the, the heads to get their salaries increased because I thought that was a really big issue. Nobody wants to slap on a bulletproof vest for 11 bucks an hour. And that was a real concern to me coming into this meeting. And I'm glad that we, we've got that fit. I'm not just signaling out the police department, fire department too. I'm not running the birdie building for 11 bucks an hour. Back to the ARPA funds, I'm sorry.
So I, I would certainly entertain a discussion of, you know, but I do believe I would like to reserve not the full amount. The full amount that was, you know, that was indicated by previous council votes was a total impact of ARPA funds of $81,000.
84,000.
Eighty-four, excuse me.
Do we have, do we have figures here anywhere that shows what's going to be left of the ARPA funds after all the deductions that we do have coming out? And I know we still.
Yes, sir. On the front end of the budget email, and I believe, uh, it's 630, 182, 22, but 200,000 of that's dedicated to the fire truck and 8,000 is dedicated to the tow hop playground.
We still need a couple of police vehicles. We need to include into that for the budget next year.
Well, and certainly, you know, we can approach that, um, you know, and in order to facilitate a balancing process, we're also going to be dipping into the ARPA funds, you know, for road materials in their budget. So that's going to further reduce that number. So, you know, the.
If I could state.
What we're looking at right now, have us down to 422,000. What we have looked at, the ARPA funds allow us to do infraction improvements. And if we're looking at a street department right now, they got built into their budget, 55,000 for asphalt, 25,000 for the road oil, 25,000 for rock, and 40,000 for chip seal and coal mix. That equals 145,000. We are allowed to use the ARPA funds for anything that will improve our roads. We're not allowed to make new roads or create new streets, but we can use the funds to, uh, go and do all the maintenance that we need for ours. So what we were looking at was pulling 145,000 out of the ARPA account, up to 145,000. We may go lower than that. But if we were to do that, that would leave us with 277,000 in that fund. By doing this, and we can't fold this into the budget because we can't include those funds in our budget, but by doing this, eliminating this from our street department, we would actually bring our deficit down to about $24,000 off of what we're looking at now, the 162,000.
So is it 277,000, is that out of everything?
Yes.
That's what we would have left in that fund just for our road department. We're not looking at Steve's cars yet. So, I mean, that's, this is what you would be down to at that point.
How much is the new worth for assessing the street?
All in.
About 50,000 for a new police vehicle, per vehicle?
Yes.
And you're going to have the money, I know we can't use the ARPA money to equip them, but you will have the money to be able to equip those new vehicles?
Yes.
Okay.
But you have that other account, that savings account.
That's what I was about to bring up.
That's got 400 and some odd thousand dollars in it.
Yes, so we're currently like for the, what's in this budget, you know, is for a new fire truck piece of equipment. It's not a, a full-size fire truck. It is a smaller piece of equipment that is going to bridge the gap. Because originally, if we were tracking on equipment replacement the way we should have been, we would have committed last year for an 18 to 20-month lead time on about a half-million-dollar full-size fire truck. What the chief did was study his equipment and part of his, you know, first of all, we pulled it off the table last year, just because we had to. And we, and we pulled off two police vehicles last year that would have actually taken delivery on this year. That was part of what we had to adjust as a result of the settlement last year. So the chief was able to reconfigure his equipment and he's getting a smaller vehicle that will facilitate only two firemen manning that vehicle. So if there's a call-out for an EMS assist, he's not moving a full-size fire truck with four firemen. So it's, it's a very smart solution. And so to, but to fund that, to get back to your point, 200,000 of that is dedicated from the ARPA funds, which on the preceding page is what Mr. Smith showed you.
Right.
And 115,000 is from the reserve account that the mayor just made reference to that has about 466.
No, that's a different account.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apology.
That I was referring to.
What I'm trying to get to is, okay, we do need two police cars. We do need the fire truck. We've already voted on the fire truck. I'm wanting to get to a point of the stuff that we know we have to take out or the what we have left before we decide what kind of bonus they're going to get.
Well, and I think that's what Mr. Smith.
Was it 277,000?
That's the 277. That's where we are prior to the bonus.
But you have other alternatives for money besides using ARPA?
No, but in terms of the ARPA funds that would be utilized for bonus purposes, trying to address your question, then that 277 is what's left that's not reserved for other issues. So from that, if we did the full bonus that was previously contemplated, 84,000 would come off of that number.
Right. So we need 100,000 for, I'm, I know we got another count, but let's say we need to have to buy two police cars off of that ARPA money. That's another 100,000 we need to take off of that. Out of that 277,000.
If at some point that comes into the budget discussion, but I think at this point that's not where this budget is.
Right.
This is where we are at this point. And so if we're talking about the bonus issue, then you're talking about taking 84 off of that number. If you fully funded it, to the extent, I don't personally believe that that would be responsible.
What is the final time restriction on spending the ARPA money?
2026.
2026, okay. Well, here's, here's my suggestion, and this is my defense of it. Ever since, even before, leave, leave the lawsuit and everything out, but ever since we started running into budget issues, you know, every single employee with this city has picked up extra duties, has filled in when necessary, has helped cross-train. You know, there for a while we had a revolving door at City Hall. It's just a fact, we did. A lot of people came, a lot of people left. These people have stuck it out and, uh, you know, like I said, a lot of positions ended up taking on. on a lot of extra work. I believe in taking care of people because in the long run, you know, gets past the heart part of it, in the long run, when you keep your people, you spend less money. You spend less money on training, on advertising, on getting them in here, time, effort, the whole nine yards. So in the end, you take care of your people, you do save tax dollars for the taxpayer. So in that defense, I do feel like, you know, we brought this up, we talked about it, and I feel like we need to pull through with it. I do not agree about the 84,000, but I do believe that these employees deserve a bonus. So I would like to open the floor to suggestions on how much. Now, before, somebody remind me, I think it's what, 1,500? Is that what we're looking?
No, the maximum, the maximum was 2,500.
Okay.
That went into that 84,000 in the aggregate. And my suggestion is that we consider backing that down to possibly 1,000 maximum with the idea that if we can move forward on some other efforts, the next effort, once we put this budget to rest, the next financial objective for this city, we have got to revisit a 1% sales tax increase. That is reality. It is economic reality and we can get into the details of that in order to communicate that properly to the public, but the reality of it is, is that if we don't take action, even if we had success and our citizens gave approval in a spring election for that, because we do have to go to our community and ask their permission. Even with that, we would not see any of those additional revenues, excuse me, until January of next year. So these ARPA funds, these additional funds that have come through from a, you know, from a government that has done deficit spending to the tune of $5 trillion on the last two years, those aren't going to continue.
You want to go for $1,000 maximum on this? Is that, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Where are you?
What Kenny just handed us is what we had talked about before. So full-time employees over one year, 2,500. Now, this is, we were going by the restrictions set with those funds, correct?
Yes.
That's where we came up with this.
Yes, so we can expend those funds now. We can expend those funds in the spring or next year, and as Mr. Martin mentioned, we have subsequent years that we can expend those funds. I do think that we should exercise some restraint. And my point of going down the issue of sales tax was that if we can get that successful in the spring, then I would encourage revisiting the bonus issue in the spring subsequent to that special election to do some additional. And I realize that backing this down to a $1,000 bonus, while it still would provide some bonus, is about a 60% reduction to these numbers.
As mayor, I would recommend reducing it by half. I think that the-
1250?
I think the employees are looking forward to a bonus, and you have many employees who live paycheck to paycheck.
Times are hard right now for everybody.
I think it would have a tremendous impact and affect their personal lives if we activated this before the end of the year.
I think it'd be easier to push this through by Christmas if we could just come up with solid numbers, say, let's go to half of what we've agreed upon. So instead of 84,000, we're down to 42,000 for the entire amount, we can get some checks in these people's hands.
I've heard from the crowd, 1,500 from the people attending.
I will say this, if you do that, we're going to have to do the math, we're going to have to come back to it, and these checks are not going to happen. It's just, you've got too many moving parts if you move off of where we're at right now. So-
I was just questioning, why does the 1,500, I mean, someone who said it?
We'll have to recalculate the-
Who said it?
It's the difference in 1,500 and 1250. I mean, that's-
I didn't say, why do you drop it that much anyway? It's our money. I mean, you've got plenty in your savings account. Very well, I don't understand why the government, they gave us money to work through these hard times.
Can we have him to the podium?
You need to come up, speak to the podium so everybody can hear you.
Please, we just can't hear you.
I don't understand why you don't release the ARPA money anyway. I mean, the government gave it to us, we're working through the hard times. You have a savings account that has almost a half a million. So I don't understand.
And that's a fair question.
And then the fire trucks, you know, did we not have fire trucks at the buildings that we shut down?
Well, yes.
We did, but we didn't have one in the class they needed. The ones, what it was is the classified truck they needed was spending more money on fuel and maintenance when they could go to a smaller vehicle for EMS runs.
But I was told, I don't know how true it is, I was told we sold the other one.
No, we didn't sell any trucks. We haven't sold any.
I'm just curious about-
But I don't understand why the ARPA though, and you say calculations, it don't take that long because you calculate it. All the other look pretty smart to me.
The process would be for all of us to agree on a number and then recalculate. I think you're not letting me answer you, though. Then that would have to come back to City Council for another discussion and a vote. At that point, there's no guarantee that everyone, or the majority of people on this council are going to say yes to that. If they, if they say no, then we're back to another City Council meeting. That won't occur until January of next year.
Okay, can I also ask a question? You said the Fire Department and Police Department, they're getting raises. How about the Street Department?
Yes, they're getting raises.
They are getting raises.
Okay, well, I didn't hear from my department yet as far as what was going on. I heard both of them get asked, but not my department yet.
Two things, two issues there. Number one, the Street Department employees have been receiving hourly wages in excess of police and fire on an hourly basis. So in light of the fact that a policeman puts, and in all deference to the Street Department employees, they do a good job, we appreciate their efforts, but when you ask an officer to put a bulletproof vest on and a gun and go out and stop, make traffic stops at 2:00 in the morning, when you ask a fireman to drag a hose into a burning building, the risk that those individuals put themselves into is perhaps worth consideration of trying to equalize their rate of pay and bring it up to the rate of pay that the Street Department employees have enjoyed.
Well, I realize-
And I'm not saying that any wage is excessive. We're just trying to do a little bit of equalization here.
Okay, but with everything else going up, you know, we have payments, too. This is going up, that's going up. Okay, so a cost of living. We didn't get this last year and, you know, just wondering, that's behind us about is ours going to get raised?
Which is, which is why, yes, yes, the Street Department in this budget has a 3% raise, employees across the board. What we're talking about in addition to that is a bonus to try and get that in your paycheck before the end of, before Christmas. That's the desire of what the council is taking up right now. So that's on top of the 3% that's budgeted next year. And then we are going to try to revisit the issue of additional bonus next year from ARPA funds. But again, to do that, we're going to need the effort of every employee and related family and friends and neighbors to pursue the issue of a sales tax increase because eventually we're going to run out of ARPA funds. You can see how those are working their way down. We're funding 145,000 of Street Department materials from ARPA funds, and we have the, we have the ability to do that. Pardon? Pardon?
Does that go back to us, the Street Department?
It gives you materials to work with.
Well, okay, it was already there.
No, it wasn't already there.
No, this was in our account, it's on my payroll.
But you're running a $162,000 deficit in your department. What we're trying to do is correct that.
It sounds like to me they're trying to pay the whole thing with ARPA money.
No, we're trying to close the gap with a portion of it. I beg your pardon?
Because I've been in the Street Department for a while, and I know how much money we used to get, and I know how much money we get now. I mean, they're going to give us 145,000 now in ARPA money? Okay. Where's our money coming from the city? From the city, not our? Coming? How much does that money make?
100% of the state turnback dollars that are remanded to the city based on population go directly to the Street Department. They don't get diverted, they don't get diverted to any other department, any other individual. 100% of those state turnback dollars go to the Road Department. So, you know, we're doing everything we can to maintain that. We also provided the Street Department-
How much more are we going to get on top of that 145,000 dollar one max?
Well, your entire budget, fair question. The Street Department budget for next year, correct me if I'm wrong, is $624,000.
Yes.
So that, that budget includes 145, but you've got a $180,000 shortfall. We're going to close 145,000 of that shortfall with ARPA funds because the state allows us to do that. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes.
Okay.
Another thing, another thing that would cause a variance annually is that the turnback funds from the state change each year. You don't get the same amount.
Right.
The one-year, the general fund may get more and the Street Department will receive less. And next year, the Street turnback funds will be higher and the general fund will be lower. That's just how they operate down the middle rock.
Right.
So, and then to another point you were making about other resources that we have, the city has been accumulating over time. When this mayor took office eight years ago, the reserve accounts were at zero. That's called no money in the bank to handle anything that breaks. The previous administration had exhausted those reserves. We had a question when we met the first time in December of 2014. There was a question as to whether or not we could make payroll. I sat on those Budget Committee meetings. And so what we did at that point, we decided that this council, neighboring cities pay up to $100 per meeting. And when we looked at that, we said, wait a second, timeout. If we're going to sit here and prioritize our employees, we eliminated $900 every month for 12 months, and that's been held, we voted in executive session to eliminate that in December of 2014, and for eight consistent years, this council does not, has not been paid one dime. So if you take eight or nine, that $900 a month times 12 months, if my memory serves me, that's about $10,800 times eight years. That's part of the reason why there's $500,000 in the reserve account. Because we knew in talking with our department heads, we have three fire trucks, one of which we should have already committed, and those are half a million dollars each. The skid steer that you utilize within your department, if memory serves me right, we were somewhere between $75,000 and $80,000 for that one piece of equipment. And we made an effort to do that because number one, that was an improvement over the equipment that you had, the street brush. It has multiple attachments, but it also has a safety cage to where you're not exposed to the rocks that were there according to Mr. Kylo, who recommended that piece of equipment. So that's part of the process we have to go through of not only maintaining a balance of competitive payrolls and benefits, but also trying to set aside money to replace equipment that eventually wears out and breaks.
Question. Skid steer, you're talking about, I'm a guy that loves a skid steer. Nothing will be used nothing but for a sweeper, maybe two, three, four times, six times a year, and it sits in the garage. I'm exposed to the elements in the skid steer that I love to use, so.
And I would recommend that you sit down and talk with your department chief.
It was John Powell's idea that it done that.
Pardon me?
It was John Powell's idea that it done that.
And I understand, but this council's got to do-
And I'm not complaining, and I'm not complaining about it. Those skid steers that outrun has cost the machinery that we've spent $70,000 on.
And I understand your comment, and I can appreciate it, but this council depends on department heads to prioritize equipment needs. So if there's an issue with an underutilized piece of equipment, I would ask you to direct that to your department. I appreciate your comment, and perhaps that would be better in that, yeah, I'm sorry, but I don't see Joey here this evening. He may have stepped in. I'm sorry, excuse me. Orange jacket, no less. New glasses. Sorry, Joey. But that's something that probably you all ought to discuss in an employee or staff meeting, and you can address the proper allocation of your equipment.
Back to the ARPA fund, can we get back to the ARPA funds?
Yes.
Can we just flat make it 1250 for full-time and 625 for part-time and just leave it at that? And vote on it tonight and get it done so they can get it before Christmas? Is that possible?
I would go for that.
Well, that was my question, Malaga. When we came up with this list, it was my understanding that these were the restrictions that we had to divide by. Is that not true?
No.
Not necessarily. This was in order to address issues with people who have only been here a short period of time, and they're going to, you're going to give them the full amount. So that's up to council.
I'd rather give them the money now before Christmas instead of fumbling around with all these numbers, just get it done. With this numbers now that we had, we said we wanted to put the treasurer in on this, with the numbers we have here, the treasurer wouldn't even get a bonus. She hasn't been here long enough.
Well, and quite frankly, Mr. Tatum, you know, I think that if somebody has been here five or 10 years, they should have more consideration than somebody that's been here five or six months.
No, but if we do that, we're going to be looking at not-
Not necessarily, not necessarily. Why can you not do this? Just go through this list and have these numbers, and that's what we're, we can vote on that and agree to that tonight. We know that total-
Just reducing these numbers by 50%.
Yes.
Yes.
And then it's done. And then you don't have to, no one has to go back and run the full total because it's basically already right here in front of us. It's just not completely woven up.
Is there a motion on you?
The only other thing I would see there is the one to six months. What was the problem? The treasurer wouldn't get a bonus?
The treasurer gets a bonus.
She, she will by the end of this, she fits into it now.
She fits into it.
The one to seven month or the one to six month is, puts her in there.
I agree, cut it down.
Okay. Our motion that we cut these numbers.
Second. Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Martin, to reduce the ARPA bonus by one half. Roll call vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Tatum?
Yes.
Ishmael?
Yes.
That was an affirmative from Mr. Ishmael.
He said yes.
I heard you.
Motion.
Uh-oh.
Motion passes.
Is there anything else the council needs to do to make sure this is done by Christmas?
No, we'll rewrite the resolution, plug in the, I mean, yeah, the resolution, plug in the proper figures. The, uh-
But it won't have to be those?
Well, the only issue would be, I mean, just for your information, the original, it said 84- original, it said eighty-four, five oh one ninety-four, so if you take half of that, that's gonna be forty-two, two something. And the other has to do with calculating the FICA, Medicare, APR's out, that, that will change it because the amount that you pay out is reduced, so.
We won't have to vote on it again, though.
Not really.
I just wanted to make sure, because, I really, these guys have been doing an awesome job, and they deserve it.
Yes.
Can we address the police cars at the next council meeting?
If Mr. Martin wants to introduce the, a police unit for the next-
It's been discussed here, and, and we're calling, you need a car, correct? You need a car bed, correct?
Yes, one, one of the rolling units, to Mr. Martin's point, one of the rolling units, correct me, chief, if I'm wrong, is the Dodge, which we were ready to basically scrap, and we ended up having to do a fair amount of repairs on that unit.
Yes, we did.
And my personal comment would be, I wouldn't drive that unit.
What we'll have to take is to get those, the figures together, so we can just put a resolution together for it.
So, police, uh, car will be on the next agenda under new business, yes.
I would suggest two police cars.
You don't need a resolution on that, just to prove that, uh-
Can we agree to?
authorized to do that.
Yes.
Can you have the numbers ready by the council meeting?
Okay.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Yeah, I want to spend some time with Mr. Thompson.
I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Well, do we not have to do, uh, end of meeting comments to say?
Oh, yes, that is on the agenda. Yes, thank you. Anybody have any comments? Seeing, hearing, none? Now, entertain a motion.
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.